Number two, it's public comment.
No public.
Any public that wants to comment. Okay. Item three, budget workshop. Kristi, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. So you guys have slides that were presented in your packet, but this is our revenues and expenditures together. We're in the shop. March thirteenth, we had the Golden Objectives revenue major expenditures update. The eighth, we did expenditures and we're to the seventeenth. Next year, we get the budget message no later than May twenty ninth. If you do by law have to the thirty first, but because the best time to get together with you guys in your schedule, June third, we backed it up on here, say the twenty ninth. And then public hearing pass the budget at the June regular meeting.
Can I ask a question? Can we actually do that on the June third meeting if it seems appropriate?
No, because you have to have a public.
Public hearing, okay, thanks.
So common themes for the objectives again that you guys outlined that talked about at this first meeting that we had was sewer listation, beach nourishment, lockwood folly inlet, stormwater, pure property, communications, block queue, staff recruitment and retention in other facilities. And that makes your budget priority areas, high quality infrastructure, community improvement, accessibility, communications and growing human capital. So to delve a little bit more into this workshop, the department head were asked to justify expenses. Those were evaluated by the finance officer and myself and refined to try to balance the resources. The budget for the general fund, B part and canal dredging is shown as balanced. Budget for water and sewer fund expenses are currently outpacing revenues, one hundred and three thousand, one seventy-one. A large part of that expense recognized next year that's not this year is the fact that Drew's, um, Drew, that Chris is asking for two fixes to two stations that add up to a large chunk of that. So two of the list stations. Public Works Director Clemens has suggestions towards rate structured discussion. Challenges for this budget include unknown assistance from other levels of government and inflation. And budget aligns with your outline priority areas that I just had in the slide before that. So your proposed general fund revenue expense budget at four point eight million. Highlights from that budget of what's being accomplished, three hundred thousand stormwater design permitting towards the two areas we've discussed previously. Police restructuring, additional certifications for personnel, street paving that's in every year's budget. Hundred thousand dollar transfer to the beach and inlet capital reserve fund is what's projected and sixty-nine thousand, three nine six is available to appropriate. And I went back in the police department and also mentioned ballistic vest. I want to make sure that was captured as a highlight. B part budget, that number has changed because as far as what you have available to appropriate and what you have to go to sand fund, because I told you Tuesday night in the meeting that I was waiting on the bathroom number to come in for what would have to fall in next budget year and not be accomplished this budget year. And also because the ninety thousand dollars that you guys had said last week that you wanted to put towards HDR, taking it to design. He sent me a number and it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand, not ninety. So that's going to change things for B part when we get to it. And I will tell you what those new numbers are, but I'm going to just keep going through the slideshow as we are now, okay? I'll let you mark up your pages as we get further along with that. So highlights in B part that were to be accomplished with the budget that was proposed is new playground equipment, dock dredging, a concert venue, finish the block queue restroom, start pier design, and it was a proposed six hundred thousand dollar transfer to the beach and inlet capital reserve and ninety-four, five eighty-one available to appropriate. You now don't have any available to appropriate.
Kristi?
Yeah.
Dock dredging, I did.
Out here.
Out there.
Our dock out here on the west side is too shallow right now.
Okay.
So we need to have a hit that spot and the ideal thing to do would be to try to pair that with another dredging going on in the area. For example, Winding River has their marina area dredged and there's a potential that we could separately contract with that contractor if they're going to do that next year.
Do we, do we have any way of knowing if we're making or losing money on that dock?
Honestly, I was keeping a spreadsheet of all the docks that came in and we can run the line for the miscellaneous B part. But the thing about it is that I haven't been able to keep up with that spreadsheet in the last, since I started doing this. So we can get close to that number for you, just not for today.
So the number, no, I understand. It's just I can't get them out of the accounts that are here. I mean, at least I don't know which counts, you know, to try to add up and say, we got this much revenue. We got this much expense. I know we had to fix this, pump out, right?
We did.
Okay.
Is there any way we can get any help with the, from the state or the federal government for that dredging? Since it's a transient, I mean, we're providing a service.
I mean, we can check into some grant.
Grant forgot it here in the first place.
Yeah.
That's kind of my curiosity is is it a net positive or net negative?
Well, it, I don't have that book in front of me, but I know you're not out of your period of where you have to keep it maintained.
Okay.
So if you guys chose not to do dredging right now in the next year, I mean, if, if there's fluctuations always in sediment, so if the tide is just right, it may be that boats could be there on both ends. And if we have extremely low tides and somebody's coming in, I had one occasion where somebody got here and said they couldn't stay, they had to leave because we had somebody at this end and they couldn't. It was too shallow for them on that end. But for the budgeting purposes for this year, I couldn't count on the revenue side for money I don't know that we'll get. Like we could ask for money is what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know we could get it, so I couldn't count it on.
But this is worst case, that's fine.
Yeah. So your canal dredging fund revenue expense budget says shovel ready by canal subdivision. And we talked about the water and sewer fund being the, a deficit. So highlights, decrease collection for new build, so that revenue lines down. Cooling solution, lift station one, ventilation, ventilation for lift station four are asked in the budget. Decreased amount for water taps for new homes. You had the sale of seven ninety-six showing the miscellaneous revenue in twenty-four, twenty-five. So if you just go and compare the revenue line, there's no revenue showing in that line this year. So that definitely shows us being different. And projection in sewer use charges going down. So fund thirty-one illustrates change rates based on the early payoff of seven ninety-six, which will transpire on Monday. And that was just a kind of highlights of what the budget has in it, doesn't have in it. I think you guys might want to start with letting Mr. Clemens talk a little bit about water rates and what he found out and then however you want to approach this from a different standpoint going through it. We can do that.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me? Can y'all hear me?
We can.
Well, I think we need to actually look at our rate structure this year to try to figure out what we need from up this shortfall. And I've looked at, I know I've mentioned last time we looked at some other surrounding communities. And there are several different ways we could do it. I think maybe some of it might be with the base rate increase or even, I was looking at Ocean Isles. They don't give any of their water away on their base rate is zero consumption. We got a flat base rate. That would be the two recommendations I would, that's the only way I know to come up with revenue to make it for the shortfall.
In the shortfall, I think it was mentioned a little bit on the highlights, decreased water caps. I mean, I still, I think we got in this conversation before, are we using less water now?
Well, there's a decrease in perhaps building has been down and actually in all actuality, you know, I don't know what's going to happen between now and we really close out this fiscal year. So when I was conservative, I could beat those numbers. The last thing I want to do is put some inflated numbers down and then have a shortfall at the end of the year. So we save a lot less on the capacity charge than we did the year, the previous year. So that, that was some. And as Kristi pointed out, those cooling solutions, that's sixty thousand dollars right there, you know, and that's a rough estimate of what AC would cost to do a pump station for. And I want to be clear, that's not something there to where we can lay up an air conditioned building. This basically something we can eat in place where we can keep the windows shut in that building and protect that equipment that we've gotten in there since mighty expensive equipment. And also we hadn't had a water rate increase in years to mount up to anything. And through the years, everything that we get is, you know, prices keep going up, keep going up. It's not, you're asking for a bunch of elaborate stuff, you know, that's on a weekly, everything's in our budget. Is a half two. So I don't know anywhere else I could cut anything to shave that kind of money off and not try to do something other than to generate that revenue. Plus, you know, in the future, you know, we know we're going to need a second water tower one day. And I think it's be a wise decision to go ahead and start looking at some of that stuff and analyzing rates and see what we have to do to come up with what we need in the future rather than waiting to us, wait until it's time to do that.
Well, I, I went through that report with a fine tooth comb and it basically said twenty forty if consumption increases. And I'm not convinced that it's even increasing.
But I don't mean it's going to go down next year. I don't know, I mean, I don't have.
I mean, to me, the water tower is just getting pushed out and out past twenty forty at this point. Cause for, at least for this year.
Well, we can assume that, but we don't know that's going to happen.
You guys take into consideration this winter.
Yeah.
There was less people here this winter. Because it was cold from October to January and people are usually renting their houses and.
We did have a couple of years as I mentioned before, we actually had a record crowd, you know, when COVID hit for a few years there, we had people staying here full time.
Yeah, that was an anomaly though. I don't think we'll see that again.
That's exactly right.
But yeah, I mean, it seems to me that the, the water tower thing was like, I, I thought it was twenty forty-two to twenty forty-six.
That's twenty forty-six.
Twenty forty-six, so that should be in a capital improvement plan. I don't think necessarily we, and it's not on there because it's so far, it's farther out than we even are looking.
Well, the other side of that is if you don't wait twenty forty-six.
No, of course not.
Try to do it one year because we don't know how long it's going to take. How you going to find it?
Well, my, my understanding was it had a projected increase in rate because if we don't hit that increase, we'll end up with, you know, you can't build it because of turnover in the water system and stuff.
I could hear you get somebody.
Oh, that's all right. I, I just saying, I, I have kind of the same numbers coming out of the reports. It's twenty forty-six assuming our water increases at a rate that seems pretty steep. So I just.
Kristi?
Only thing I could say to that.
Yeah, Kristi.
You can wait a few years and see what happens.
Chris, I, when I stopped talking, going over slides and you first started talking, I was moving things around up here. So I miss whether you could have, forgive me if you did, that we still are giving the first two thousand gallons away and other, like his research, other people are not doing that. So I mean, that is a easy starting place for you on both sides, water and sewer.
Now there.
But also, you know, he did find information on rates too.
And there are also ninety-one cents a thousand, I think he was hiring with.
Didn't we just have a big water increase because the county increased it?
You sure did. I think that was about two years ago.
Yeah, I thought so.
Was putting reverse osmosis system in.
Which they have in.
Like an eighty percent rate increase.
Yeah, that's a.
But every increase that we've had for the past, that I can remember, it's just been passed through.
Yeah.
Related to the county, it's never been.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We haven't marked up.
I know, I know, but I thought I heard you say we haven't had a rate increase. But I think from a people's standpoint, we have had a big rate increase, almost doubled. But I understand what you're saying, we didn't get any of that money.
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
Yeah.
As far as putting more money in.
Yeah, of course.
Done anything, we just didn't.
Of course.
Well, to me, it makes sense to have a base which handles the infrastructure costs and capital to have the water there and then consumption charge on top of that in terms of what you use. Cause even if you don't use any, we still got to put plumbing to your house and, and there's a capital infrastructure.
And if you get somebody that uses nineteen hundred gallons of water, we, we put two thousand gallons of water and you just give it to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So with that, if you've done the calculations, would that fix the problem?
We have not done that, those calculations yet unless Daniel did them. But we've not done them yet because we didn't know what you guys might want to entertain. Chris was comparing to Ocean Isle and they do not do that. And I know that he also had some paperwork from Oak Island in his hand and I don't know how far he got with that.
I didn't get very far on the other album, but it looks like they're, I think they're twenty-five, twenty-two base charge, but they do give the two thousand gallons, but their base rate is.
Much higher.
Much higher.
So let me answer this, Chris. Just to get it in everyday terms. And I know different sized houses use a lot more water, rental houses, people don't care. But what are we looking at, say for an average household increase to first cover this hundred and three thousand dollars? You got any feel for that?
I haven't done the math right down like that right there, Rick, but if you figured like, if you're figuring, you'll be used base charge for example.
Yeah, just.
Well, you figure if you got, I think we got like twenty-six hundred, maybe twenty-six fifty that's got water and sewer. Now we do have irrigation within, you figure, well, dollar, two dollars, twenty-six fifty times two per month, times twelve. You know, that's your number.
Okay, so it's not going to be, not that anyone wants to pay more, but we're all paying more for everything else.
And that's, that's a sure way when you do it with the base rate. Because, you know, I've always been taught by, for example, if you were using water and sewer fund to pay debt with, they usually recommend you do it in a base rate because if people put you using water, you still, you're getting the base job.
Yeah.
That's a more sure way of getting it. But as far as you know, the random water rate, if you're, you're having person here to just two families or two people to the home, now they probably use less than three thousand gallons a month. And you know, it's not that much of a benefit.
Right, just by rough math, which also brought us the big error in the HDR number. So I don't know if you want to trust it, but it looked like three, four, five, six dollars a month, which is not, we're, as I like to say, we're not a marginalized community and.
Well, that may give you a chiseled in stone number right now. Like for maybe the next time when we come back with a meeting, have some, there he goes laid out on the paper.
Yeah. If you, and if you send them before the meeting, that's fine too.
I don't want to do it that.
One other thing with regard to the statement on the water tower, and Chris and I have talked about this, when you start looking at replacement equipment and stuff, inflation rates, tariffs, all this kind of stuff may accelerate how much piece parts cost. So we talked kind of about having a, what do we call it, a repair and maintenance.
Repair and replacement.
Repair, replacement. So, and I know some of our pumps were having difficulty finding. So you may find something out there that's equivalent, but you may have to refoundation it in order for it to, depending on what that particular piece of gear looks like in order to have it interface in our system. They're not all exactly, we don't do this like submarines where they have an envelope and it has to fit.
Yeah.
So we discussed trying to grow some capital to deal with that. And if that pot gets too big, we could actually drop a rate, which would probably be a first in history. But you know, I'd rather have something, start looking at having some of that so we don't get hit with a big charge or have some type of special assessment.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, I, I feel a whole lot better, you know, doing it a little bit at the time, at the time rather than waiting and having something big there all at once. I didn't really tell you all the good news, you know, when I spoke and told you that I thought we might have to have a generator this year. The generator checked out. There were some issues on the wiring, so we didn't have to buy a generator this year. And that would have been another eighty thousand dollars.
Mr. Evans had something to add to the conversation for us to think about as well. The high flow fixtures, thank you, I word escaped before a minute, are coming back. It's through executive order, so.
Water.
Yeah.
Yeah, water. The president issued executive order and now high flow fix, you can now use high flow fixtures. People are going to change. The, your waters, your, your, your estimates on the water tower, I'm not a big advocate for it. I'm just saying, the estimates originally and all of the calculations are based off the DFUs that are currently being allowed at that time per household. Those DFUs are going to change if people start taking advantage of that executive order for high flow fixtures. Actually, the original water tower actually took into account and the water system evaluation when we evaluated, took into account the new efficiency rates and the DFUs based off of those efficiency rates where water was actually throttled. And you, you couldn't put as many DFUs through a household system as you can now.
DFUs are.
Drainage fixture units.
Thank you.
The actual water that be used for each plumbing system you have inside your home. Basically, the way they calculated it, they, they can do it by person or they can do it by bathroom, bathroom groups is the way they do it. And so that's how the whole system is designed, even your water line and your water distribution line and your water service line. So while the water may be available that we give to them, they can't use so much of it in a particular period. In other words, you, you may get half, I mean, twice as much water out of a shower now than you did before because you're going to be able to use, have more water coming to a shower.
That's going to impact sewer too, because that water is going to come around.
But it's only going to be the new build because the old people aren't going to change that. And the new build's only like one percent in, you know, of the, of the total that we have in the town. And people aren't going to run off and change that.
I've changed my shower.
Yeah, 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 people are going to change the showers. But here's the thing.
I have plenty.
And there is thought with that, let me tell you what it is. Up until that was done, you couldn't buy a high flow head because you couldn't sell it because there's nowhere you could install it. Because everybody uses the international code, okay? Now that it's happened, everybody's going to start producing them because that's going to be the hottest ticket on the market is the high flow head. In other words, in other words, when you used to go pick up, when you even bought one, even if you wanted to change yours, when you went and bought it, you were limited to a restricted, one that was restricted. You go to buy one now, you don't see high flow, flows better, you know what I mean? And so people have to maintain them every day. Your water system's wonderful. So a lot of people may not change it. But other places that have different water system, the water system itself causes them to have to change. But I, I, I don't know how many of the rental companies would do that. I don't know, but I do know they do an awful lot of maintenance, fixing leaks, you know, many of that kind of stuff. I just think you should keep that in mind that, that it was based off of the DFUs that were allowed.
And that could all change in four years too.
And it could, yeah.
Getting back to rates, if that means people are going to start using more water, then maybe we'll start getting more money for use of water. I mean.
Well, I was speaking, I'm not speaking in terms, I'm not speaking in terms of rates. I was speaking in terms of that math that y'all have for the water tower.
Yeah, yeah, which we.
I mean, I, I feel like the water tower said we weren't going to need something for fifteen or twenty years. So my mind, in ten years, you're going to have to do a new study and see if some of those assumptions are right. Right, in ten years, you're going to do another study and see whether it was right or that went, actually went down. And then at that time, you would figure out if you need a water tower in five years like they thought or is it another ten years? And then you put it in the capital improvement plan. We're, but right now, that's not something we need to worry about.
So another way we could fix this, it's secondary, well, I want to say it's kind of underhanded, but it's not really, but we could stop giving away two thousand gallons a month.
Yeah.
Right, and we just would give away, maybe we give away one or whatever. So it'd be a policy change, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that, that would get you to that base, because then if you didn't use any, you'd still get a base charge.
Right, so.
And I mean, to me, it just makes sense.
No, you always get a base charge.
I understand, yeah, yeah, well.
It's like thirty-five dollars or something.
Base charge payment, but if you use two thousand gallons quarter, you'd be paying for the base charge in.
Right, so if we get rid of the two thousand dollar gallons, it's just zero, then the base, I, I mean, to me, it's fair that the base covers the cost of having the water available. And then the variable is your usage base and.
And I do think when we're looking at that, we also need to look at the sewer.
Yeah.
Because the sewer, you know, you've got the expense of those generators that you have in value for a few years, about eighty thousand dollars. Then you got a vacuum truck, I mean, there's some decent pieces right there. There's like, like I said, four dollars and ninety cent difference in the base charge, Ocean Isle, there is us on sewer.
We're going to have them right now. Okay, can Daniel figure that out on the slide?
So we've got a couple options on how to cover the hundred and. So, we've got a couple options on how to cover the hundred and three K shortfall. You're going to tell us, you're going to give us a recommend, options and maybe a recommendation of the one you think is the best. Okay.
And I think we can, we can handle that.
And we should consider things like generator replacements, I think, because we know we're going to replace generators. We know we're going to replace pumps.
And now you're going to have to have that vacuum truck replaced.
Right, so that's kind of where I think we should look down the road and start to maybe perhaps plan those periodic replaces, replacements and start budgeting in that direction. And I also, I know we don't currently have it, but we really need to put an inflation factor in as we go down the road. I think some of the vehicle replacements, you probably just go, yeah, add another ten in five years or something, but.
Yeah, like you say, fifty thousand dollars right now, ten years, sixty.
Yeah, if we're lucky.
Yeah, if you're lucky.
Yeah.
So, does not, do you not have that number? It's two thousand gallons. How much do we charge a gallon? Somebody should be able to tell me what that number is.
Five forty six a gallon.
Excuse me?
We, we charge five forty six a gallon, I think you pay five twenty five.
Per thousand, isn't it?
Per thousand, excuse me.
Yeah, I was going to.
Five, five dollars and twenty five cents per thousand? So, you're saying everyone's going to have an extra ten dollars and fifty cents?
Right.
Yeah?
If we do that.
If they use, if they use, if they use two thousand gallon water, they will.
Well, the first two thousand, yeah, that we're not charging them for now. And if you say there's twenty six hundred houses, times twelve, that's three hundred and twenty seven thousand, just for the water, not even adding the sewer.
I think it's like about forty dollars per customer a year.
Now, absolutely, now that math you're doing, right. Now, that math you're doing ain't quite, ain't quite right because in the wintertime, when ain't nobody needs houses, we can't figure that that's going to be year round.
Yeah, 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 okay. So, so you got to overcompensate for what he's saying in the, you, we don't want to get it to wait, right to a hundred and three because you don't know, half the time, they're not going to be using the first two thousand gallons, right? And what he's saying is that, well, why don't we just charge them for, well, this way I heard, I hate to put words in there. If, well, why don't we just charge them for the, the two thousand? And if we end up getting three hundred thousand, we put it in the bank for the generator and the blah, blah, blah. And we only get half that because the people aren't here in the winter. We got a hundred and fifty and we got fifty thousand in the bank.
Well, I think any kind of third foot that, that we've come up with, I think it's a wise thing to put it in prepared replacement fund, whether you do a water tower or whatever you do. Sooner or later, decisions will have to be replaced.
So, I would ask that you bring us that back after you've been able to look at some of the math. First, we have to cover the shortfall. And then secondly, probably got some idea of how much revenue we might want to bring in for that repair and replace. And we can see how that goes because what's been, what's been pointed out here, we've, we've had some unusual years. So, the data set that we, recent data set is probably not a good representation of long-term stuff.
Can't look back.
I didn't say anything that's going to increase any kind of cost from, from anybody, but all reality, everybody sees that, I mean, I see problems and everything about buy or have to have to live costs more and running it just goes less and less, it's just. It's just my opinion to me what things cost us day in and day out. I got a, a estimate day and it was for two hundred and sixteen little plastic house, like those equipment in that water main box and it was right at thirteen thousand.
In our front yard, yeah.
In your front yard. And that's not counting radio that's in the spot. And truth be known, it probably comes in China and probably cost them about four dollars. But there's no other option. I mean, you, 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 you got to add.
Okay. You want to go ahead?
Yes, we're starting with just taking away the two thousand that we're giving away and that's how we're going to bring back for the next round. So, next, is there a particular place y'all want to go or you just want to go page by page?
Page by page.
Okay.
What's one thirty one?
That's what the.
I don't see that anywhere, anywhere here. It says somewhere one thirty one.
It should be after.
It said, it's on page thirty two.
And looking at that page, I believe the cap, the capital charge, it went down from some debt getting retired and also the early thing of, of seven ninety six. Don't quote me on this, but I want to say that's to the tune of around forty dollars. So, if we increase rates roughly that per customer, they're not going to see any difference overall.
Well, that would be a good thing.
So, so on this one, the capital charged county sewer and the revenue is what we get in from billing and then the county capital sewer cost and the expenses, what we pay. So, that's our profit margin on it, the that's.
No, they, they equal, there's no profit margin.
Well, one's one thousand, one million three hundred fifty two thousand, the other one's one million forty four thousand. So, there's.
The total for all the debt is one million three hundred fifty two thousand.
I'm looking at, on the top part. No, I understand that. I'm, I'm looking at these highlighted. I highlighted, um, in the revenues, I'm sorry, I jumped around. Um, the line that says capital charges counties dash sewer and the twenty five, twenty six budget amount that's shown here is one million three hundred fifty two thousand six twenty two. It's four thirty three, so it's a, that can't be right. What is that?
I said no.
Yeah, okay, one million three fifty two sixty, six sixty two. And then, if I jump down to the first line and the water and sewer expenses, that says county capital charges sewer. So, one's revenue, one's expense.
The county capital cost sewer expense, that is just the county portion of debt.
Of debt only, it's not water use.
That's not the, uh, interest on that debt, that's just the principal.
Okay, so that's capital, okay. I was assuming that was the water cost.
No, water cost.
He's just saying that these two things go together is one is for the vacuum truck for the, the, one is for the, he breaks up the.
Okay.
Capital charge just covers debt, it doesn't cover paid out rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll go back to beginning. So, we're starting at page fourteen.
So, so I have a question about the taxes, the current, and I'm seeing that so we budgeted three point three, three five million and we've only brought in two point seven nine four. So, that's like, we have five hundred and forty one more thousand that we're expecting to get on our taxes this year?
That, that was as of twenty eight.
Yeah. It better now?
Yeah, we're at ninety six percent collective right now.
Okay.
For now, I'm getting paid in, uh, all the dividends with taxpayers back up front. In, uh, late May or the beginning of the year, there's a massive paper that's still on page eight.
So, you're expecting that to be, the taxes to be pretty much flat?
Yeah, it'll be.
And three point three, three million.
Well, it actually went down a teeny bit, right?
Yeah, it, it went down a little bit just based off of last week's play.
You can't charge more than what you feel like.
No, yeah, I just, you know, I mean, it's flat to going down. That, that kind of means when our growth is not that much.
Yeah.
I mean, Tim, at one point, you ran a number, right, of how many houses, you know, how many empty lot, how much more we can grow before we're.
Yeah, I haven't done it lately, but I did it one time.
Was it eighty something percent or what was?
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, we're above eighty percent.
Okay.
Now, that's the developed, that's the lots that can be developed.
Yeah.
There are some areas on the beach that ain't, that haven't even been planted.
Okay.
You've got some large areas in Dunes Gate, other areas that you don't know what lots you got or what you don't because they haven't been planted.
Then at some point it's.
We're above eighty percent.
Okay.
I don't have anything else on that page.
Oh, I just had a question, interest on savings and investments, hundred thousand. Is that for our B part, fund balance money or what's that? Hundred thousand of.
That, that's general fund.
Okay, so it's a general fund. I mean, that's what I meant, the general fund balance.
There's one on each of them, right? There's one of those same things on each of them, whoever, there's one of our B part and, yeah. It's because you change those over to actually be making decent interest rates now, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I went from.
Your sa, our savings.
Twenty to a hundred, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Which, I mean, last year, we could burn, at the end of the year, we have, we thought that.
Mm-hmm, good. Put our money to work. I don't have anything else on that. Uh, right in the middle of the page, can someone explain the parking violations? So, we have six thousand dollars in this year's budget and we've collected none and we have six thousand in next year. Are we collecting any money for parking violations? I assume this has nothing to do with the auto stuff. It's just the stuff that our police force is doing. I thought I saw some violations on your report, so I'm surprised it's zero, that we've collected zero on parking tickets or violations.
So, not to throw anybody else under the bus, my comment on that is going to be, we enforce it, we do not collect it, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the police department is not in the money collection business, so.
And go outside that, Christine?
Yeah, the only thought that I can give you is if we, we can have the finance department run the line, check to see if any of those come in and it's just been posted to the home line.
Yeah, first plan, I'm going to get that they got, but it was probably.
Well, it's, okay, but you also have that on the next line. So, my point is that if we're not getting six thousand, we probably don't want to say we're going to get six thousand this year, right? Overinflate our revenue. If you only got a thousand, then we don't want to say we're going to get six thousand.
I think it's probably based on if you think that it got posted to ordinance violations, Daniel, because that one is, you know, over the amount.
Yeah, by a thousand.
Yeah, I would think that you definitely, we would want to take that down. And I guess, I don't know, Jeremy, if you're presenting, presented that in your numbers, but as you update the spreadsheet, both y'all work together and we need to take that down.
It looks like last week, like twenty two hundred.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, I think Idaho's getting the bulk of it now, so.
Okay, Tim's saying that he's pretty sure they've collected for zero ordinance violations. So, their number is probably twenty two, twenty five, all should be up to the part.
What, what, where our show is that if we charge them reinspection fees.
Okay.
So, even for the ordinance, if they don't comply, we have to go back, we either charge them another review fee or we charge them reinspection. We have no ordinance violations. That would show up if somebody didn't comply and we ran up like five hundred dollars a day.
Well, last year you collected three thousand.
Well, we, we had that guy that did though.
All for one guy.
Didn't pay attention.
Anyway, the numbers didn't make sense to me, so you can figure out what it should be when you look through the actual stuff. Then the other thing I'm looking at, building permits going from two forty one to two nineteen and then the electrical inspection going, all these things are going down, mechanical going down of what we collected. Does that mean we're building less? Tim, I'm surprised to see all these going down.
That's, that's what I've been reporting into that. What's happening is, and I hate to go back to the high flow thing, but anyway, I'm reporting that our remodels and repairs are going up.
Yeah.
While our new construction is coming together. And that's what I said the other day, when that, when that number starts, when that remodel repair starts dropping, housing start going up. People quit repairing and they start building. And they'll even tear down structures to build. And it is my guess that you're going to see next year come up. I think our building number from last year for revenue got inflated because of the odd years that we had when people were doing that.
Right.
But it, but we had a three or four year period that was a business and it never been here and then it just kind of went back to normal. And, um, so I think that's what.
Okay.
That's reflected.
Good, I'm glad to see that. If that's what you're seeing, that you're, you're not over inflating what you expect the revenue to be. So, that's good. Good from a planning, not necessarily from a financial standpoint.
Well, it's, it's, you, you know, it's a, it's a very sophisticated guess and there is an algorithm that I use uh, to get these numbers. I've been doing it for almost thirty years. Usually not way off, but they, we were, we had a problem last year because the number was so skewed.
Yep.
For about, I use a five year average.
From COVID.
Yeah, I have a five year average. I throw out the low, throw out a high, you know what I mean, and try to maintain it gradually. It was, it was hard to do that.
Okay.
So, it's my impression from the POC meeting reports is you've been really, really, really busy.
Well, I, I hate to go back to the high flow thing, but to give you an example, I saw nine bathrooms being remodeled today myself.
Okay.
And I, I only did a portion of what's out there. When you got ninety one remodels going on, you could bet every bathroom being changed. So, that, that's, that's what it is, is that we're actually going more places, maybe doing more inspection. But what we're doing is not, you know, not adding taxes or you're not getting a big collection up front of random.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't decrease the amount of work we do, but it sometimes.
That's all I had on that page, fifteen.
Sixteen, that, that, on sixteen, that fund balance preparation last year, that was the EPA stuff that carried over that we didn't.
No, that, that was the transfer to the beach.
That one is? Under fund, oh, okay, okay.
I thought that was, I thought that we had that, I thought that was under.
Well, the revenue's got to match the expenses, so.
Oh, revenue, revenue, revenue. Oh, this is the revenue page. We did see it on the other page, this is the revenue. Yep, yep, yep.
Page seventeen.
So, I'm looking at the professional services and you have a hundred and fifty. Do you have a, a little additional money in there for lawsuits with a hundred and fifty, Christine?
Um, they, Daniel and Heather usually work on a projection for this line together. And it went from one twenty four this year to one fifty. I think since you do have available to appropriate in the government or in the general fund, if you would like to take and put more of a cushion in that line, you could, it's.
So, you don't have like additional stuff? It's the standard of what your business as usual would be right now? Is that correct?
I think they took it up a little bit, but I mean, I can remember what the amount was specifically.
Yeah, no, definitely not lost it, what, what he said.
More like an hourly rate, yeah.
Uh, an hour, like inflation. All right, so we might want to consider doing that from available to appropriate, which is sixty seven thousand right now? On the next page.
I would suggest we wait and see if we have to do that.
Leave it in available to appropriate.
Yeah, let's, let's hope we get out of the lawsuit situation.
That's fine.
And again, we still have what's in the general fund account balance for emergencies and that's what lawsuits should be. We shouldn't really be planning on lawsuits.
We could if we've gotten a letter threatening it. But if we, we have money sitting aside, that's fine. And can you tell me about, um, board of elections, the forty five hundred, what's that, what is that?
It's an election year, so we need to pay the board of elections to.
Run our election, so that's just normal election stuff. Okay, thanks.
Moving on.
Yep.
Page eighteen.
So, just a thing, so we have sixty seven thousand to appropriate in the general governing body, that's.
Yeah, that's your available appropriate for the general funds, the maintenance balance. Now, just understand that in the next month, that some keeps coming in, like when we get the streets, Chris has a potential something that's either potentially depending on how it goes for the town, having to be fixed this year or next fiscal year. So, what you see tonight may end up changing during the budget messages, more elimination comes on those.
Yep. And maybe some of it can be used from this year's budget too if we.
Yes, we will definitely try to do all we can with our resources we have this year if it's something we can accomplish before due thirty.
Okay, nineteen, I don't. Nineteen, I don't have anything. Twenty. I don't have much more going forward. So if anybody has anything, jump in. I have a lot on the CIPs, but I don't think I have anymore on there.
Well, I, I just done insurance and bonds, I was trying to read the fine print. Terminated contract obligation.
Can you tell me what page?
I'm on page eight, sorry, twenty, twenty. Insurance and bonds, one fifty-five, eight fifteen. It, it described, general insurance, bonding requirements, new requirements for flood insurance for town hall and terminated contract.
Well, we know what that is, so.
Do we? Is that under insurance and bond?
Yes, because it's related to health insurance.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna bring that up.
Sorry. Moving on.
I just have one quick question.
Page twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay.
You have something before that, Tom?
No.
Okay.
Tim, if I recall correctly, uh, and inspectors have four certificates per level or? Three?
It's three, but the state's getting ready to change it. It could be as many as what used to be only fifteen for a five level three, which is like.
Yeah.
Is probably gonna go to twenty-eight. They're, they're, they're getting away from that kind of a thing. But anybody that's in program, which we have everybody in program, we'll go with the old, so it's five.
Okay, so besides yourself for residential, we have one inspector that's also good to go for residential? Or will be very shortly.
For building. Uh, they, the person is certified and qualified in three levels, but they have probationary. Their probationary run until May of next year, same person.
Okay.
I suspect that she will have four level three. I mean, four level ones by next year.
Okay.
It's hard to do, it's not, there's, only in a small municipality like this, if you have somebody trying to achieve that many levels in different districts. Now, they, they master one. You know, in, in a small town, it's more efficient for both the government and for the department to be able to go once and do it all.
Yeah. I, I was just, what I'm keeping an eyeball on is just how soon will we have everybody up to where they can work independently, they're not on probation, they've got all the things, their tickets pumped, so to speak. And it sounds like next year.
Well, uh, well, no, it could be before next year. She, she's, she's done everything that she needs to do, she's waiting. We, we also have to wait for the opportunities. She just needs to take that one thing.
Okay, all right.
And, uh, we don't like to put too much pressure on them, you know what I mean?
Right.
Uh, because they're not eating.
Right.
What he's telling you is we're not gonna tell you when she's taking her exam because the only person that's probably gonna know is Tim, just so she doesn't have any additional pressure. I won't even know.
I, ultimately, I, I wanted to just have a comfort that we're working to get them qualified because you got all kinds of stuff going on and it might take some of the burden off you.
Well, she, she, well, the burden is, the burden is being lifted off of me a little bit every day. They're doing a wonderful job over there. I'm about a forty, even when I was doing it, all the inspections, I was still a forty-five. You know, fifty-five, fifty-five doing building inspection, forty-five getting to a plant. And of course, these last couple of years, we've had challenges that we've had to deal with and more than one certain areas and more and more gets asked of the department. But the person that's, that's, I, I don't know that. My building inspector slash plan reviewer, the one that we hired for me to, to train, is moving along through the system much faster than anyone I've ever trained before.
And that's Jana?
No, that is Carrie.
Okay.
Jana is doing both, she's doing zoning and camo.
Okay.
She basically took Rhonda's job and of course I have to oversee that as well. So I've been training her, co-training her at the same time because Rhonda leaving was sudden, there was no one to train when Rhonda left, so I've been bringing Jana along the same time I've been bringing Carrie along.
Okay.
So effectively, I, well, if the day comes that I get in a car wreck, that department will be able to operate by without me for the time.
I like using win the lottery better than car wreck.
Well, my, my, my thing is, listen, the lottery I'm gonna win is where lightning strikes.
Yeah.
The big and the one, but anyway.
That's you and me.
Yeah, so I, I'm doing everything I can to get them fully certified so that.
Okay.
Department is not one hundred percent dependent on me and that I could take a day off, so.
Yeah.
So that's the goal.
Okay.
Um, and we're there, we're, we're there, um, and I think that, uh, when Carrie feels that she's ready for that last exam, then we will make sure. But like I said, she has another year that she can perform. She doesn't have to be with me any longer.
Okay, great.
She's under probationary, she's finished the class, she passed the class with me. I think it's important that this is the time to educate everyone here. When you're, when you wanna be a building official, if you want to be five level threes, you have to take thirty exams and pass.
Right.
Thirty exams, you have to, and the amount of time, I can pull it off for you, but it is equivalent to almost a four-year degree for contact hours, for classroom and study time. The state's already done it, the office state fire marshal's done it, they've all done it. It is not an easy program and they're trying to make it easier by breaking it all down. But, a, a, and that might be so, but it is a rigorous program. It used to be only two years, they now, two-year probation, they now give you three. I gave Carrie, uh, three years and that's only for one. We gave Carrie three years for all of, just for level ones. Now, you're, you're gonna have level two stuff, there's level two stuff, but the minute she gets level one, if she so chooses and you also need or the department needs, she can, she can actually implement her probationary fee. And all that basically does is let her do inspections until she can get certified. Now, even if she goes past her probationary period, she can still certify, she just can't expect past probation.
And just to be clear, since she obtains these levels as well as the individual cert- certifications, there is a salary bump that goes with it?
Yeah, well, there, there is, but I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you that we made a mistake. I feel like we made a mistake when we set up our salary ranges for, for the raises that came along. We got the flood plain management stuff wrong, we got the mapping stuff wrong, we got the building code stuff wrong. Within, and it's partly my fault and, uh, and, uh, and the reason it's my fault is because if we were somewhere else, it would be more important to have level threes than level ones. But it really here, it's more important to have level ones.
Agreed, agreed.
Because that's when you're, you don't need it. So, we got it wrong, Carrie, you know, through the, through the thing, I, I don't know where we'll ever get the opportunity to correct them, but encouragingly, you've all heard me say this, everyone over there to be a cross friend, Jana's going through plumbing probationary right now. Got a lot on her plate, so I'm allowing her to, I have to sign off for, at the state. I have to be their person. So, because you have to be certified to do that, so I'm allowing Jana to go through the plumbing right now. The idea is that Carrie, who's learning everything just like Jana, Carrie is at a, right now, she's advanced. But she's also learning the zoning, she's learning the stormwater, she's learning all that. She will be going to get in her flood plain management, uh, certification soon. So Kimbo is sitting in front of us. Jana gets through plumbing, I will, I will sign off for her to get another one while Carrie's getting her last. So the idea is that there will be no day when someone in over there that can actually do these inspections. Because most, or a plan review, plan comes in, someone can't issue them. We have no more long permit issuing periods. So right now, we have two plan reviews that be here and we have four people who should come. Everybody, so I'm cross training whole bunch. But the incentives for that really are a factor.
Right.
They, they, they should have been a flat graduated, we should have flattened them.
Yeah, I'm aware of how the county does it.
Yeah, we should have, we should have flattened it, we should have made it, instead of making it one, two, you know what I mean, three, we really should have made it two, 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 if it'd been more accurate. We all were well.
Right.
But they're doing well, they're, they're, they're motivated and they're very interested, they're, they're, they're not know-it-all, they're learning us. That's what we, we like to try. Thank you.
Anything on twenty-five?
Where are we?
What, what page are you on?
I was on twenty-three, but I have nothing on twenty-five.
All right, tell me what the next page is that you have something on. Anybody? I'm all the way at B part, so. You got anything before that, let me know.
To be fair, I asked questions earlier, I sent them and got some answers to them.
Okay.
Hoping to get out of here before sundown, maybe.
Anything, Tom?
Uh, no.
So I'm on thirty-three.
Okay. Thirty-three didn't change.
Well, I, hold on, I've got something on twenty-nine. Um, communications, is that the meter reading? Because that one's a high number for communications. I'm on page twenty-nine.
Yeah, that's, uh.
The metering.
That's actually just eight and nine meters.
Okay, that's what I thought, because it's. Okay. Okay, yeah, because I saw cell phones a couple lines down, I figured it must have been the, the metering, so. What page are you guys on?
Um, so then we start at, we start with B part on page thirty-three. Uh, so the only thing I was looking at was that the parking revenue was a lot lower, but again, it was to two twenty-eight. Do you happen to have an update on that?
Um, he sent a new report and I think you commented on that during your.
Okay.
Um, thing Tuesday night, um, Daniel, so you may be closer than me pulling up the report, but we, we've been pleased with what we've seen coming in and since this February.
Yeah, we were, uh.
Good.
Compared to last year, we were up eight, I think eighty thou.
Perfect.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And it's really those two numbers combined, the seven eighty-seven and the one twenty-eight, if you're looking at all parking, right? Because you break out the peer, good.
Yeah, and the, I think that our check last, this, that he just delivered like a week ago was like an eighty thousand dollar check.
So you're happy with those numbers that you have estimated there?
I am.
Okay, good. And occupancy taxes just remaining stable, you have no inkling that that's changing?
Do not.
Perfect. Okay. I didn't have anything on thirty-four. I'm looking on thirty-five at the bottom and I think that's part of what Tom was looking at before was the dredge dock that moved that number up to, way, way up to one eighty-five.
No, the playground equipment moves that number up to one eighty-five. We've got, I, I based it on you guys getting about eighty thousand to ninety thousand dollars worth of new playground equipment to start the phasing.
Good. Is it replacing what's there?
Yeah.
Or, okay.
Yes, actually removing what's there, it won't probably get to every piece, but we did talk about phasing.
I mean.
Ideally, and I haven't talked to Tim about this at all because I don't know where that's located and with all the camelines, if it would even be possible. But ideally, if it was possible in permitting, one day in the future, you guys would potentially consider pour and play to be more ADA friendly. The, like Ocean Isle has and, um, Oak Island has, there's that pour and play rubber surface, which is better than sand.
Yeah.
But just that alone is like a ninety thousand dollar haul on something that size. So this particularly just takes into account equipment. And I, I am researching a, um, the lady I told you I met with from the state that, um, came to talk about any projects we had and corresponding funding that may be available, did tell me about a T-level grant that is potentially available, but again, when we don't know we might get the money, we can't count it on the revenue side yet, so, you know, there would be options explored there.
But none of that will be done until after this season, it would be a winter project?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna replace the canopy over the playground? We got the poles, right?
We have just been a little covered up, but we should be getting that up. If we normally, as the season starts to come back around, Chris has guys put that back up and they've just been covered up.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
But thank you for the reminder.
If, if he gets uncovered, the playground will get covered, is that what you're telling me?
We've been waiting for the wind to get down west of the sun.
It really takes about three or four of them to go out there at a time, so it has to be more than just Sean to get all those stuff leveled out and stretched the way they're supposed to be.
Okay.
And so that, that one eighty-five number is combination of some capital project plus?
Yes.
Okay. And the capital part's the part that shows up in one twenty, is that?
One twenty, you threw me off with.
Well, I'm jumping between, it just seemed like new equipment, the way you're describing it, it's a capital thing, the capital project thing, right?
Oh, yes, are you asking me if it's on the CIP?
Yeah, I see one twenty on the SIP, so that's my assumption, I just wanna.
I'm including some of that into the playground equipment parts and rate facilities, yes.
Okay.
But there's also other parks and rec facilities in that, because I'm telling you that I counted on about eighty-five to ninety thousand in playground equipment. Does that, so on, on your expense sheet right here of this line that says one eighty-five?
Yep.
I'm counting the eighty-five to ninety thousand in playground equipment and that corresponds to your capital improvement plan where it shows the one twenty. There's also other facilities for parks and rec included in that.
Will the new equipment be rated for adults? Because I understand. Just asking, because I understand that's what happened with some of the springy things, they weren't set up for people like me to go sit on it, but people like me did.
Yes, um, I think most playgrounds put a sign that says this playground's for twelve and under and it doesn't keep people from like us going out there and also doesn't keep drunk teenagers from going out there either, you know, that happens too. So it just, we, we can do the best we can and I see even young children abusing things, so.
Okay.
Basically, you guys have got a lot of life out of that equipment and just in the environment that we're in, everything becomes so that it runs and it needs attention.
So, we're on thirty-six. Block queue professional services, that's what we just approved.
Professional services.
Is that the master plan that we haven't approved? That we are approving with it?
Okay, let me move back up. So the master plan that you didn't approve yet originally on your thing last time said seventeen, but I took it to thirty-four because most of the, when you guys were talking about big master plans that you were speaking of, including the other parts of the pavilion and all of that, your numbers are more like a thirty-four thousand dollar number from what I've seen in the past. It may not even get you there, but that's a lot closer than the seventeen to go with a shorter version. But we are starting, Tracy, with this fiscal year, with just the concert. So this is to do the bigger haul.
Good.
Y'all talked about or more phasing of additional pieces that you didn't touch yet.
Okay.
And then what I do need to talk about is the block queue projects. And then what I do need to talk about is the Block Q projects. In your packet, I was like, that's not the right number, and that's why that's what I need to talk to you about. In your packet, that says a hundred and one, three-seventy-five. That number on page thirty-six that was in your packet. Was what I projected at fifty thousand to finish the bathroom, and then the rest was the town doesn't get exempt from paying the water fund back when we have. Facilities that go up just like housing stock, so that accounted for us doing that. But your new number, based on talking to the contractor, and that they're only gonna be sixty percent complete by. The end of the fiscal year, is that Block Q projects will go to two-seventy-eight, five-seventy-five, is what's gonna be needed in the budget.
That's for the bathroom.
Yes, and to pay the sewer share fee back. And for the four-forty-one, we also need to talk about that.
So for Block Q, we've already spent five-forty-three?
No, we won't spend all of that, that's what I'm saying.
No, I'm, no, I'm looking at the actual as of two-twenty-eight, that's not.
That's the encumbrance. We encumber the whole thing, because we have to encumber the whole contract, but he's saying he's only getting sixty percent of that complete. By law, when you get the contract, you have to encumber it all. So whatever not spent will flow back to the unbalanced, and then the reappropriations will happen next year when the budget goes in.
So the balance of that one-hundred to one-seventy-eight will be re-appropriated into next year's. But we still have to take it out of this, this year, so we have something else that we have to.
We still have to show it as coming out, like when, when we approved the contract, we had to go ahead and show it as encumbered. And now that he's saying what he will actually accomplish.
So that's a big change, a hundred and seventy-eight, so where's that gonna come from?
It's gonna totally wipe out, between the two changes I'm about to tell you about, it's gonna totally wipe out your available-to-appropriate. And it's gonna take your transfer to the Beach and Inlet Fund down to four-seventy-two, three-eighty-one. Because the other thing that went up. Is four-forty-one professional services. You guys had estimated ninety thousand to go to the next level of design, to take it to construction, and that number of one-seventy-five.
Yeah, I have a big problem with that. I, I don't want to change, I don't want to take a hundred and seventy-five thousand from the six hundred to maybe spend it when we're gonna go to referendum and let the voters decide if we're gonna spend it.
I think we. Should still plan on going forward with it, you have to remember, we have a large chunk of money in. The B part balance, and there is an abundance policy for B part that we maintain it, so we've got money to do things. And I would not assume it's not gonna get voted through, so I would plan for the actual cost. Because it, it simply won't get spent if it doesn't, and we want to have it in there if it does, so I want to, I want to use the number HTR gave us.
What I'm, what I'm hearing.
Yeah, go ahead, because.
Is basically saying do a fund bal, a fund, a fund balance appropriation, so we don't change that number, and take the B part balance, some money out of the B part balance to do the HTR?
No, I'm saying, forget, what I'm saying is, there's no reason to sit on available to appropriate.
It's already gone.
Yeah, let, let me run some back to stuff, see if I can make sense of mine, kid. I think we have more than enough money, there's no reason to play a shell game here at this point. But that is something we intend to spend. Until change, I, that's, that's what I think, so.
Okay, so.
Leave that number in.
So I want to leave the number in, transfer to the Beach and Inlet, I want to leave that six hundred. And if we decide to go through, because the voters voted in, then we would spend that money and move it from the, the savings, or whatever you want to call it. And not put it in the budget and, and sell short the, the beach, and inlet.
Because the transfer's on refer until at, at the end of the fiscal year, right? So.
All right, you got it.
End of the calendar.
This is the plan, I mean, this is what we're planning.
Okay, I don't agree with what you'd like to do.
So you think that the money should be going towards the pier, which we don't know if the voters are gonna go for, instead of putting the money towards the sand fund?
And I would say while we're talking about that, you go look at the fund balance in B part, and you decide what you want to do with that sitting there, because there's no policy for it to have any balance.
So that, that's what I was hitting on, you basically just said, take it out of fund balance.
Take it out of savings.
You could, and I guess it's fair game, because we said no fund balance appropriations.
We did.
Except for capital improvement projects, so this is CIP, but I think we're just playing a little shell game with the money. But I, I, I would leave that number in.
I would leave the number in.
Extended, intended expenditure.
So the problem I have is.
Hold on, do you, do you have one more point?
No, Christie.
Well, I just want to throw one more thing in it, because this is about in public, we, second or third time I've heard you guys use the referendum reference. And since I first heard that circulating, I have tried to be proactive to do a little research. And I think that you guys need to be aware for your own purposes, that there's things that have to occur before that. So just meeting the Brunswick County deadline, like we have to go and appear before the LGC and show them what our plan would be with cost. And there's a calendar that has to back out with a financial calendar in order to meet that, and normally if people are, and to my understanding from talking to the folks that I talk to that do usually help with these things, which would be finding advisors and bond attorneys. That in order to get to a November deadline, most people usually start in January or February. And so I'm not saying you can't do it, but I would be remiss in not throwing that out to you now that it's come up a couple times, and then you guys think you're running to the finish line to get there, and then it come up, and somebody say, well, there's other things you have to do. So I would just say that's not a total discussion for tonight, but keep it in mind as you're making decisions about how you're gonna go forward with what you're doing with pier right here.
Okay, well, I've got a couple of questions, because I guess I've been under the assumption that if you're going to the LGC and asking for them to approve that. It's much better to say this is voter-approved, or voters have approved, you know, this, versus going there saying, we don't know.
I think as of last January, they made some changes, and you potentially may have to appear before them first and say that you have what your plan is, what the amount is, and then they can tell you to go forward to. There's been some changes that occur, and I've not reached out and not, I've just stuck my toe in to try to get you guys to have enough information that if you were proceeding down this path, that you weren't going in blind. But you would actually need to, we'd have to talk about it at another meeting, and if you're really gonna entertain the option, you'd have to turn me loose to actually talk to people and charge, them charge us money kind of thing.
Well, I don't see any, I see that as a less, the least controversial way is let the voters decide. And this is a good elect, because the next, wait a year, it's an off-year turnout, you know, that'd be the only thing on the ballot. So to me, it's like, this is a good opportunity to let the voters choose and to put it out there.
And I, I don't want y'all to get to a decision tonight, I just didn't want you to get past this discussion, and then we have to tell you that I've looked into it a little bit later, and you're saying we wish you, we knew that information before. So I'm just trying to tell you as much as I've been able to find out at this point.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is, we're already behind the eight ball, and we need to catch up if we have a chance to do that, so I guess that's my urgency is. You know, if we got stuff we need to do to decide if we can even do it, we need to do that.
I'll have another follow-up discussion and see, and see what we need to do at this point, how that.
Yeah, can you do that before the next meeting that we're having, when is our next meeting? Our next meeting isn't until May?
Yes, definitely.
Alright, well then, let's plan on having it on the agenda for the VOC meeting in.
We'll have a budget meeting before then.
That's what I'm saying, do we have a, no, our next, this is it.
Okay, sorry.
I'll see what we can, just like the, the funds in there, as we can already play, I, I don't see what.
Because the funds went from ninety thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand, that's why. And it took the money from the sand fund, which I think is more important than the pier, because the people come here for the sand and not the pier, and that's an amenity, and this is a, a must-have. The pier is an amenity, the sand is a must-have. That's my opinion.
My opinion is, we have to have recreation, and that's what we, that's what we were planning to do, and so I thought we were together on this, those amount seems like.
Well, we.
It's kind of like painting your house. And she sees your house painted. And then she, you know, it's gonna cost five thousand dollars to do it. You just put the money in the bank and save it, you know, it doesn't matter, you still gonna have to use it one of these days.
Let me say something here, when you, if we do get in front of the LGC, aren't they gonna want to see that we have budgeted the, the next design step? You can't say, we want to go do this, but we're not funding adequately. So, obviously, this controversy, controversial, but I. I don't think ninety thousand dollars, given the cost of beach renourishment, is a make or break number. And if we don't do this, it'll all just, you know, you can roll it in there, but you're still sitting there with. Over five million dollars in B part. That isn't in the fund balance account, then, you know, you can make it up, so you can do this to keep that number the same and all that kind of stuff, but you could also conceivably. Appropriate to the sand fund from the B part account balance. As long as you follow the, what the statute says on how you split the money up, right? Maybe, I just, I don't think it's enough money that's gonna, you know, make a difference on the beach renourishment. So I di, I didn't put all the work into the plan to just go, yeah, I, I still want to see if we can deliver a pier.
Well, that's.
That's me, that's me, we can vote it out.
It's, again, you know, as we were talking the other night, it, it seems that, you know, that we need to go ahead and try to move forward on this. And it's, you know, you mentioned the voters, and that's great, I mean, I understand there's probably a couple hundred, maybe three hundred that will vote here on the island. But I think we need to take it to the taxpayers, everybody. I mean, the voters can't run this deal, you need to, because it's not. It wouldn't, if it was eighty percent of the island were voters, I'd say, yeah, let's do that, but maybe five percent. So, you know, we, we need to go ahead and move forward on this. I, I think that, I think that's the thing, what we need to do, but, you know, I can tell by talking that this is something that y'all don't want to do, and you're gonna try your best not to do it.
I wouldn't make that assumption, I would not make that assumption, you have the floor?
You may, you need something wrong, but let's, let's put the money in there, and if we don't use it, you know, if it comes up to that, and we get a good plan, then, you know, like I said, we go to the LGC, then we get, we've got a plan. Otherwise, you know, we, we can't go and ask for something unless we've got a plan to do so.
Does your plan that we approved have us going to this next level of design in the plan that we approved as a board?
I'd have to go read it.
It doesn't. It, it has us doing what we have already contracted them for, that was the plan, that's what we contracted them for, based on our plan. You're going to the next level, and I don't think that we should be doing that until we've had input from the voters to tell us whether they want us to go forward with the pier or not.
So.
Because otherwise, it's wasted money. If they voted down. And I don't think that you assuming that we don't want the pier is true, because I want to do what the voters want, and if the voters say go forward with the clear, with the pier, I'm all for it. And the process, the way the process works is the voters decide, that's, they decided who sits here, and they decide whether, where we spend the money, whether they like it or not, because they don't, they can't only vote one place. And they, if they choose to vote here, then that they get to vote on what happens here. So saying to take it to the taxpayers, that's just not realistic, and that's not how the process works. Yeah.
I, I, I can speak.
We're spending there, pay your dollars.
That's right, and they haven't had a vote in it, because that's not how the process works.
Please.
Let me just add a comment, because I've been involved in trying to solicit taxpayer opinions, and there's no indisputable way to do that. The most accurate survey I ever saw just totally got unaccepted, because people didn't believe we had the right people voting.
They didn't like the answer.
They didn't like the answer, and I, I would love to do the taxpayers, I have no idea how to do that in an acceptable manner. You know, now, if there's a way to do it, that is the best way to do it, absolutely, but I don't know how to do it.
That's why I said a referendum is how, that's how you vote.
Well, well, I, I mean, I can tell you exactly what the problems are, if you go to the property records, you got all kinds of estates and bankers and, you know, those aren't the people that actually own it. It's owned by some trust somewhere, or some LLC somewhere, and then how do you know that their vote should count, you know, how do you, how do you get that vote? I mean, you, you're in an LLC, which one of you would vote? Of the, so, so you're not getting the taxpayers, you're getting the people that are managing the trust that has ownership of the property. I, I, I mean, I, I am a hundred percent behind it, I just have gotten burned a lot of times by trying to do it, and complexities come out, and people don't accept it. I mean, people accept a vote, because you got the Board of Elections, it's really tight, and those are the right voters, there's no corruption, that's legit.
That's the process.
That's the problem we've got, is there's no alternative to that that's acceptable to people. I mean, I'd love to find it, I'd love to find it, I really would, I've tried, but, you know, you got water bill records, you got property records, you got all these sources that, that don't lead you to the person that you're thinking we want to have make the vote.
I believe we would be a majority. Not, okay, not get them out, it's probably some that are in that position, if you can steal, put full some effort.
Having been through it, people will not accept it, and they will not be happy with the result.
And the board voted against the majority of the homeowners that were surveyed.
Yep, we, we don't have a good history of being able to do that.
I'd like to get back to the budget, and I'd like to make a motion to keep the hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the four-forty-one professional services line.
Hold on, that's not, you're speaking from the packet, and your number is two-twenty-five. Remember, I was telling you that it's two-twenty-five.
Which item are we talking about on page thirty-six?
Four-forty-one professional services, because it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand is the number he came in with yesterday, after your package went out.
That we had ninety.
And you still have remaining on the contract that's not gonna be spent before the end of the fiscal year.
So what's the final number?
Two-twenty-five is the number for professional services.
I, I revised my motion to keep two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in the four-forty-one professional services line.
Second. Second.
I guess we're ready to vote. All favor?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
No, three to two.
Okay, so to be clear.
That's the four-forty-one professional services line, it's at a hundred and eighty, it's gonna go to two-twenty-five.
And you unders, everyone understands that the one above that, where it says Block Q, is going from a hundred and one to two-hundred-and-seventy-eight, so that's another additional hundred and seventy-five that you're taking out of the sand fund.
So your available-to-appropriate goes to nothing.
Yep.
To go negative, or is it nothing?
It's zero.
Zero?
Can't.
Well, goes negative, then we do.
That's why he recommended.
Fund balance appropriation. I'm sorry?
That's why Daniel recommended leaving that money until the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, so it doesn't go in the sand fund, we understand.
That's not what I said, the sand fund, he recommended it for cases like this.
Can, can we move on?
Yes, please.
Okay, so. We're done with that?
So I have a question on the Lockwood folly dredging, the two-fifty, the bend widener, that sand that we're gonna get?
Yes, it's our turn to get sand from the crossing.
So it's basically like paying for, so, it's basically paying for sand?
Yes. That is the best estimate based on what the contract was this year, until the four lets the contract every year, we never know what that amount is, but. You may not use it all, or I may have to come back to you and say the contract is out for us to do the bend widener, as far as the project is, and you have to, if you choose to do a fund balance appropriation at that time, it's just best numbers that we can use at this time.
And Christie, in the past, that has come from the sand fund, correct? And this year, we did not budget.
We did not budget for it, they come from the sand fund, because in the past, that, because it is the Beach and Inlet Capital Reserve Fund, and we keep calling it the sand fund. If we were getting the sand on the beach, and we were doing the bend widener, so every other year. So every other year, we would take money from the sand fund to put in there. We did not budget it in the CIP coming from that. We instead just included it from the revenues.
So we skipped over one called, uh, Pier Ben, Pier Reno and Repair for Sixty Thousand, Stabilize. That's a new item. Is that correct?
Yes, I sent an email to you guys to explain that in case we, um, I saw the HDR report. And based on what it is saying, and the fact that we had the, um, here now marked as uninhabitable. This would allow you to stabilize it if we had to take action on behalf of the town, if we were told we had to do that.
Who's gonna tell us to do that?
That would come from your chief building official. We would receive a letter, and we would have a certain amount of time to take action.
So sixty, is that assuming, it's more than just fencing, then? Is that taking it down, or what is?
That is stabilization first, and, and or depending on what we're told we need to do. We would have to take down to potentially the higher mark.
So did you just say that Tim is gonna tell us to do that?
Chief Building Official is who determines public safety under the Building Code, so that would be.
So can we have a discussion on how likely that is?
I don't think you should at all. That was not, the attorney said no to. In the email that went back.
Okay.
You put him in a very bad spot in a budget meeting, with his representing his budget versus going to a different hat.
I will say it's not a letter. It's a hearing. Building official has judiciary power. It is that actual hearing. I'll send you a letter telling you have a hearing.
So if I'm hearing you right, on page thirty-seven, we're, um, taking the available for appropriation down to zero. And we're taking the transfer to Beach Inlet based on both of those changes that, um, went way up to. Four seventy-two?
Three eighty-one, four eight, ten and two, three eighty-one.
So I'd like to make a motion that we move that hundred and twenty-eight thousand from the B part savings into this budget. So that it stays at six hundred.
So you're saying do a fund balance appropriation?
Yep.
Discussion?
Is there an issue with that?
No, other than, I mean, we had a goal of not doing it, but if we feel that is.
I mean, if you wanna keep it, I mean.
Okay.
I know there, you guys wanna keep it up there. I mean, it's six, one, half of this and the other. But if that's what you wanna do, I'll get on with that.
Any other discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Three to one, or is it three to two?
Motion carried.
All right, page thirty-eight, so the. Canals, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, I don't have anything on those. Those are pretty much pastors from there. Okay.
Will we move to the SIP?
Yep. Can we start with Beach and Inlet? Might as well, while we're on the, on a rule.
Sure. Beach and Inlet SIP. Can somebody explain this? Daniel, did you create this, or?
Yeah, me and, uh, they created this last year. And, uh. So at the top, that was the cost, or the estimated cost of the project. After fifteen years, when. Our, uh. Advisors estimate we will need one. That's far, that's saying no major, major FEMA dent.
So this, this basically says in the year thirty-nine, forty, we're gonna do a fifty-one million dollar beach re-nourishment. Is that?
Correct.
That's what, and, and out of that, we're gonna put down twenty-five, half of it, twenty-five, five, okay.
So does that assume that our beach is at, um, ground zero right now? Our beach is where it was. Where it should be to be an engineering beach at, right now?
Yes, we.
Because we had FEMA freed stuff, we got lucky kinda, because we haven't saved any money for the last. Eight years in our beach fund to do the re-nourishment in fifteen years from eight years ago, but we got lucky because FEMA brought it back to where it was.
We lost it, and we qualified for storm damage through FEMA.
And they restored it to.
And they restored it to the condition that we did it in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, when we had the project.
Post.
Right.
And your beach plan says that you're on a ten to fifteen-year guide slope barring storm events. If a storm event comes in, that's different. I mean, a storm could come like a beach next fiscal season.
But we hope that FEMA would, but we can't plan on it. That's the whole point of this. But we've had eight years, and we really only saved, we had saved less than two thousand dollars until we moved our two point four in this year. That, that fund was depleted down to about two million, I mean, two million.
Well, let me, I'm just trying to understand what, this is a plan, right? This is a nourishment plan that says. Fifty-one million dollar project, fifteen years from now, we're gonna come up with half the cash, and then.
I'll tell you what half the cash is based on.
Okay.
Last year, when this was presented to you, it said a third, because at that time, we were in a study with the Corps. In which they, they did give us a federal beach. That was a percentage they paid when we worked on it the first time around. When this time around, the best number I could go with to pretend, because. You know, luck can change with the beach, or even, even friends. Like, this is a difficult thing that you've asked for last year to put together. The, um. Half number is, there's a grant through the federal government that Bald Head Island issues with some of their beach nourishment stuff, and some stuff with their going. It has zero match. What the state currently has available is dollar for dollar. So it really depends on what kinda other money you're getting to pair with that. What you can use as your factor of what our percentage of pay would be. I mean, it's really kind of just in the air, and it's what we might be able to get from other folks.
And it could also be zero, in which case we have to pay, take out twenty-five million loan.
Right.
So I think that's a pretty good middle of the road. I mean, the Corps said, no, they're out, so they're not even an option.
Right.
The assumption is that, yeah, if it's a major storm next year, or whatever, FEMA will still be around, do it. This is, if there's no major storms, and this is just. Gets eroded to the point, we gotta do something. This is fifteen years from now. I, I mean, I. I look at this stuff like it's retirement planning, right? I'm planning to retire in fifteen years. I'm gonna need fifty-one million dollars to do that. And here's my savings plan to be able to be in that position. Maybe that's.
No, that's how I did too. I mean, you gotta save for the rainy day. So the problem I have is that you're saying we need twenty-five million, and the plan only shows twenty.
Right.
And also, you don't have anything in for next year.
Yeah, that, that, help me out there, because that's where I'm kinda, is that basically those top lines is the estimate. And then the bottom line is our savings that gets us to that, but doesn't quite even get us to that point, right?
Yeah, so the, the top line, the beach inlet CRF balance, that's the current balance, so after. That's what we're at right now. Next year, we had budgeted a hundred thousand dollar transfer from General Fund, and six hundred from B part. At the time this was.
Yep, which is still there now. Came back.
So the ending amount would be five thirty-one, so that carries over to the following year. And, yeah, we don't have anything.
Why?
There. Because, I mean, that's a budget thing. That's up to the board year, year over year.
Next year for operations wise, I mean, basically, you have to add up what all your operational costs is, and then see what you have available to transfer, as we've seen tonight.
Well, that's the problem, is that shouldn't be last. It should be in there as a plan, and that's what we need to do. And then you back off anything else that might not be necessity.
Well, my, my other thought about it was, I mean, this puts us at twenty, twenty million over fifteen years. I mean, if you, and thi- this is very conservative. There's, there's no interest being earned on this money, and right now, we're earning five percent interest on this, so.
But, but, will that go to this fund, or will that go to the general fund? I mean.
No, that goes here.
It goes into this fund.
Compound, if that compounded over fifteen years, it, it'd be well over twenty-five.
Trust me, five percent isn't gonna stay.
No, it won't.
Twenty-five years.
It won't, but, I mean.
It may get us there.
I'd still say that if you're doing a, a plan, like all these other things, you have stuff there for next year. I mean, that, when you're looking at. And, and the other question I have is, why isn't this part of this? Why isn't this the sand part of this capital improvement plan?
Because this goes out fifteen years, but when we need the project. And that's not super realistic for, uh, operating CIP.
I think last year, you guys agreed to it on a separate page for those kinds of reasons.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm glad we've got it. It's on the page. It was last year, like, well, it fell off the page. We don't have to deal with it. And, and now we're dealing with it, and, and, and like I said, I think, you know, we, we fought to do. What we need to do this year. We'll probably fight again next year. You know, to actually implement this and be in this position when we need to be in this position is gonna be tough, and it's gonna take some trade-offs. And that's what we're doing.
Also, you have to remember that B part, well, property and B part also bore all the expenses for the ADA project. And so in this fiscal year's budget, I think we had like five hundred thousand program for that, that, you know, next year, we almost put, I think. Twenty-five percent early in there, and then you have your debt service coming off of Block Q after this year. Now, this coming fiscal year that we're talking about, we replaced that with the concert venue. But after that, that amount of money, you know, you're not gonna be tying up in operations. So I think you're gonna see that you have money to put towards this, that we just don't know what those amounts are gonna be now.
I know, but I'd like to see a plan that we're gonna do, put some money in there, and then back into the other stuff. Because just what you're saying, in twenty-six, you're gonna have three hundred and forty-three and ninety-three in, in less debt. So why wouldn't we put, uh, four hundred and. Thirty thousand in there at a minimum, that we know that we can put in there?
I, if you, if you guys wanna add anything as a placeholder, that, that's fine.
I would like to add the interest, you know, I mean, because this is basically telling me we need to be setting aside one million, eight hundred, twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. Every year into the sand, the savings account for sand, and, um. You know, I think if we grew interest in there, you know.
What interest would you like me to assume?
Whatever, what's assuming?
That's what he's saying. What do you wanna assume? Two, maybe?
What, what is, what's a valid assumption, given?
I mean, it's five now, but it's been down to zero.
Two percent, okay, throw that in.
But I would still like to see some money in there for twenty, a plan, to put some money in the sand fund next year. Because if you, in the eight years that we've had this sand fund, you only manage to accumulate less than two million dollars. The only reason your balance is four point four is because we moved two point four this year. Otherwise, you were less than two million dollars in eight years, because there was no plan.
Well, it wasn't me, this is all.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Welcome to our world.
Exactly. You know what I'm saying? I wanna have a plan that has us doing it, so then we can look at the plan and say, okay, this is what we said we were gonna do. Let's make sure that this happens.
And, and.
Yeah, no, I give a big shot.
And so I want some money going in there next year.
Money did go in there, but it was used for dredging the inlet, is what whittled it down. So there was money in there, but it got, you know. This is, doesn't have any inlet dredging. This is just to do a re-nourishment in fifteen years from now, assuming we'll need to do one in fifteen years from now. And, um, I mean, even now, after all this fighting, we're still short, right? Because we only put seven hundred thousand in there instead of one point eight million. So we're a million bucks short of gates.
Oh, yeah, right, exactly. The plan up on the top says that you need to put one point eight, and we're only putting seven.
Yeah.
Isn't that right?
No, that's right.
Well, you need one point eight per year, but you're starting at five.
But the bottom, the bottom line, it starts at five, and then it rolls it forward, so that's all factored in there. I mean, we're, we're not on a path to hit the twenty thousand, but along with twenty-five. Because we didn't hit the one point eight for this year.
Anyway, I'd like to see another. At least five hundred thousand in the transfer from B part for next year as a plan.
Well, what, what happened last year, I mean, wasn't planned, right? We just, at the end of the year, we ended up exceeding the.
Surplus.
Policy, policy put it in there.
There, well, from the general fund.
From the general fund. I would like to see it going from B part, and then if we get more from the general fund, maybe we're gonna get up to our one point eight. Because we're not, we're not, we're falling short.
What, when you're saying you're falling short, I think you're misunderstanding what that one point eight is. Like, so technically, you're ahead, because twenty-five, twenty-six, if you do one point eight a year, all you need in twenty-five, twenty-six would be one point eight.
I gotcha, yeah.
So.
Okay, but I still see I'm twenty million versus twenty-five million.
Yeah.
That's my shortfall. I don't think you're gonna get five million in interest in the next fifteen years, that two percent. I'm not doing that on my calculator, but that seems excessive.
Run that number, but it.
I don't think you get five million.
It'd be a lot.
Yeah, I, I think that, that one point eight, twenty, that line is misleading. You know, basically. It's the bottom is where the rubber meets the road in terms of, how do we get to twenty-five million in fifteen years?
So.
Counting interest.
So if you can run the numbers with the compound interest of two percent, and see if that gets you closer to in the twenty-five, and then see. I think we should still.
Well, we need to, we need to correct the, the, the number of what, you know, because, yeah, the one point eight doesn't include the four million that's already in there. So that's what you're saying, is that right?
Yeah, the, the top box is completely separate.
Right.
From the bottom.
Right.
The top box just represents, you've got fifteen years before you have to do this. So you need, in fifteen years, you need twenty-five million, and that just equates to one point eight million a year.
Yeah, yeah, that whole, that whole top box is not really helpful. Yeah, I mean, all we need to know is fifty-one million fifteen years from now. And we want half of that. And then we gotta get the bottom box somehow to total up the, the twenty-five million.
Right.
So you want me to just?
I, I would scrap the whole top box, because that's not how it's gonna happen.
Maybe just have the far right project cost.
Correct.
Project cost.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Fifty-one million, which I, you know, sounds like there was some, you know.
Well.
Analysis, I got to that number.
Yes, they keep the twenty-five to say what the goal is.
Right, right, so we just need that, that left.
Far right.
Just that last box. And then, um. What would we need to do to be able to achieve that plan? And that's where it's, you know, I mean, granted, we got one point two million coming from. Having paid off the central reach loan. And then we would have interest, and then the rest would be our target for what we gotta set aside in the Beach and Inlet fund to get there.
Correct.
In the out years, aren't we reducing debt, and not all that debt production is being shown is going to the beach, right?
Uh, this coming year.
That's why I'm saying, like, these three, we should put in for this year for the beach. These two are going, so this year, we should have them going to the beach from, from Block Q and the.
Yeah, like Christie was saying.
Right.
Next year, the, the concert venue kinda takes over the Block Q debt service. But after that, you could assume that that three hundred thousand goes to this, if you wanted.
Till the next thing comes up, and then the next thing. I mean, I, we all live that. It's like, should I save for retirement or take a vacation? I think I'll take a vacation this year.
You're still following your policy in the general fund where you're taking and moving money after the audit.
Right.
You're putting that money.
But we're, we're kinda basing it on faith that we're gonna have a windfall after the audit, and we've been lucky, but.
Well, I think we all, we always budget conservatively on revenue and expenditure, so there always is a surplus.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And staffing issues creates many bigger problems.
And, and you still have. I mean, you still got, um, B part fund balance that has no fund balance requirement.
So it's got to be spent either on beach or recreation.
Right, well, there, see, here's my point. There are percentages. I forget what they are, but it's three percent, two percent, one percent. And you could look at that large balance there, and whatever part's supposed to go to beach re-nourishment, you could consider. I don't know if this is a good idea. It's two percent, which is thirty-three percent of the six percent, right? Is that right? Is that right? I think so. So it'd be thirty-three percent of whatever the fund balance is, you could conceivably put over there. Uh, and please check my math.
Well, I mean, the parking revenue's going in there and that doesn't have that, it's just the ad valorem tax now, dollar number that's got that requirement on it.
But not there.
Not the whole fund balance.
No, but for B part taxes, three percent goes, we do a six percent tax.
Right.
Right, and three percent goes one place, two.
Yeah.
Right, two percent goes to the beach and one percent to the county or something.
I was hoping we'd all be excited that we went from nine four thousand going to the fund to um four hundred and fifty some thousand going to the.
Yeah, I I
Yeah, I I.
I, again, I think we can figure it out. Um, and I am glad to see this.
Well, I I I'm with Tracy that protecting the beach is more important to me than anything else, including the pier. I mean, some people, you know, like the pier, I wanna protect the beach and and I'm proud of that. And it's, it's, you know. So, I I mean, I I bought before we had central reach, so I've seen it with no beach available and it's not pretty.
I I agree with protecting the beach, but we gotta walk and chew gum a little bit. And it, I, can you take another shot at this plan to see if we can, based on debt service reduction and a modest interest rate, see where we end up? Is that reasonable?
I think we need a plan that, yeah, that that we can argue it the way we're arguing it and say, you know.
You, you want to see this where thirty-nine, forty, that bottom number is twenty-five, five?
No.
Correct?
Well, thirty-nine, forty, where the twenty.
Yeah, yeah, that bottom row that says twenty million, seven thirty-nine.
Becomes twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yep.
And and.
And that means you have to add more stuff some other places.
Some of the debt reduction stuff through two percent interest.
This before the next meeting, like, do we have to wait till May third to see this be done?
We don't have a May third meeting.
June third.
Until, no, we have a, when's our budget, next budget meeting?
June third.
Okay, so can we?
I mean, I can make those changes pretty quick. If I, I mean, is that against any rules for me to send that out or what?
As long as the board doesn't have discussion.
No, no, we won't discuss it. We just wanna see it. And then if we wanna discuss it, we can call a meeting.
Correct.
But I don't wanna wait till the last minute and then, you know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, basically what.
I mean, you don't have to do it tomorrow. Can you do it in a week or two? I mean, yeah.
I think I can do that send out next week.
Okay, perfect.
And two rows.
Perfect. And adding the two percent compound interest and then adding something for next year that makes it work to twenty-five. Thank you.
Okay, so move on to the rest of the SIP.
Okay, um, can someone explain the um stormwater programs of one point nine million for next year on this?
Sure. The federal funding, the two point two million that they refer to seventy-five percent of. Only three hundred thousand was projected for this year. It's on a two-year glide slope, a little over two years. But um it's on here because the three hundred thousand and the one point nine, you get your two point two. And there are no corresponding revenue, cause at the last what budget workshop, you guys said mark out core. So I can't put imaginary revenue from somewhere else on there. So it would have to be shown as absorbed in operating expenses if it's not happening for fund revenue.
So if it's the core.
Or operate the revenues, general rep fund revenues, if it's not shown with a revenue source.
So if we go with the core, we get a revenue source?
They pay you back seventy-five percent of the cost.
Of the two point two million?
Back to seventy-five percent of the two point two million if you partner with the core.
Who's they?
The core.
The core pays you back?
Mm-hmm.
Why wouldn't we do that?
Cause we said mark out core at the last budget.
Well, you know, the implication is to mark it up for.
If if we decide at the May meeting, when you're presented with everything that you want to partner with the core, then in a future version of the capital improvement plan, there would be a corresponding revenue source to offset that amount.
And how much would that be to be moved?
They pace up to, if we cross all the islands, about all the teams, seventy-five percent back to us of what we spend.
Seventy-five percent of one point, two point two.
Two point two.
And that's guaranteed?
As long as we don't, as long as we, you know, follow our engineer plan and we turn in our invoices and we've done everything that we're supposed to do. Like, if we chose something that was an alternative that, and I say alternative, but part of the project and we went with, let's say they called, they say that generally accepted is like one base level. And we decided we were going to base level above that, they would only reimburse for the base level. So that's why they use the words up to seventy-five percent.
And that's based on the stormwater plan and that gets all the six things or however many.
It is two areas that we talked about before, the three hundred block and the east end of Mullet Avenue A.
So I guess in my mind, there were uh appropriations or earmarks for the core that we piggybacked on. I didn't know the core was reducing their price by seventy-five percent for us.
The earmark is for the core.
Okay, so we get an earmark, if we spend it for the core, we get it.
Yes.
Okay.
And if we don't get it.
If we don't spend it for the core, with the core, you don't get it.
We don't get it.
And is there some other avenue for civil works, projects other than the core?
Not particularly. I checked with Warden Smith after I heard mark out core. There are a a potentially an avenue through E P A. Um, but it is very much a rugged road to travel and they do not advise it. And I will tell you from everything I learned with working on the E P A grant for the lift station, that's not a road y'all want to go down.
So if we put the.
Million, huh? Right?
It did, but you don't know what I was doing at my desk to try to get that either. I mean, E P A is a hard road that is, that people will tell you is the hardest grant to do.
We got two and a half million.
We did.
But aren't some of the things that we talked about yesterday, filling out that form, wouldn't that get us some state money with whoever they match us with?
Yeah, the N C.
To do some of this stormwater work?
Well, we.
That was in our stormwater plan?
Potentially, but we can't show it as.
No, no, of course, of course.
We don't know if we're getting it.
Of course.
And then you're three to four years out and we've got to. So you're either, in in the two-year period, you're either partnering with the core and we're using the two point two. Or you're turning it down with partnering with the core and you don't have that earmark.
And if we turn it down, is there any chance of getting any more in the future?
Well, uh, like I said, there's an E P A and it's a harder road to travel and it's not guaranteed. This has been allotted through the congressional budget to the town. But it's up to the board members on what they want to do. I can't tell you to do this. I've never done this portal before. And you guys have to decide what you're comfortable with.
I would, I would feel a lot better if we had a established success rate with the core. But the last two projects have not turned out well for us. We've spent millions and gotten nothing.
He's talking about the.
See, the the.
Be the good.
Storm damage reduction.
Before that, they did the whole grind work, which also went nowhere.
The what?
They they were involved in years before that.
Cause we stopped our.
Right, right. I'm just saying, but that's the history. We can blame ourselves if we wanna blame ourselves. Uh, we can debate that one till the cows come home.
So wait, did they offer us this and I didn't think I, we voted to turn that down. I haven't heard any vote.
I didn't even know we voted to accept it in the first place.
Know if we did. That's what you're saying, are we turning it down? I didn't think we had any.
Come in May.
Yeah.
You'll guys will, they'll have a partnership agreement. They'll have everything in your agenda package. They'll give you briefing and you're either saying yes or no or this or no or not. But I got the impression that there's a potential of no or not, when you guys said mark out core over here on our expense sheet last week.
I don't think that that, that wasn't, that wasn't my understanding at all. I thought we marked out core so that we could leave ourselves open to anyone in addition to this other state thing. And we could still do the core or we could do this, but I didn't, it wasn't explained that we were, we had, that we were eliminating this option. That's why we took it out so that we had all options.
Okay, so.
Not this specific option only.
The core was not a good venture in the past, so we, it sounds like you didn't wanna do it yet.
That's why I I wanted to, I have the exact same opinion as Christie, where I didn't realize we were turning our nose up at dollars. I thought we were limiting ourselves to only be able to work with the entity that was named. And if we took that entity off of there, we would have more freedom to bring in other parties.
No, she should adjust the non-stakeout.
Yeah.
So you feel, is, so until we know in May which direction we're going, we have it laid out in the C I P. Like, if we form a par- partnership agreement with the core, then there's a line that was in here that said um.
There'll be a revenue line that matches the seventy-five percent.
It would be, uh, we we actually deleted the direct appropriations, federal or state would be where it would go.
And I did not know we were nixing that by taking the core off of that.
So the only place that it nixes on the C I P, because if we don't end up going with them, we can't show that as a corresponding revenue source of getting money back in. It's just that we're proceeding with stormwater on our own. And if, or through state sources undetermined yet, but if we don't, I mean, you wouldn't have to bite off that amount in the second year either.
Okay.
Like, if you don't, if you, if you are presented a deal, I swear I'm gonna describe it. And you don't like the deal and you decide that you're not going with it for some reason, then you would decide at what page that you are pursuing your stormwater. But stormwater is one of your golden priorities. So it's pushed forward in the plan based on the knowledge that we have right now.
So if we put core back in C I P table, we can show the funding, right?
No, we don't have to. All we have to do is in May, we have to agree to the plan and then she'll put that funding in the, in the thing.
Yeah, but.
In May, we gotta agree to go forward with.
And it allows us to pursue other things.
And we haven't committed to that.
We can't anyway.
We get to here.
Right, but if we put core, we can only do the core.
So you guys, okay, let's try to back up a little bit.
There's only one way to get federal money. You can still go get state money independent of this.
You can, which is, I was trying to also work on a grant for that as well, but I have to know. Anyway, let's back up so quickly to the beginning. So as a federal priority in previous fiscal years, including last year, you guys have voted you wanted us to pursue. And we got the amount for North Carolina increased through legislation that we were working on. For the core's authority through the five-one-one-three program, but you have to work with them. So that's one pot of money. But then in September, when we were hit with potential tropical cyclone eight and there were funding for disaster relief available still through Congress, still through the core. Instead of the money coming from this pot, now it's available to you to come from this pot. You're not able to play in this pot anymore for right now, while this is back. They are coming to present to you the draft project agreement. Because you have to enter into agreement like you did with the study. Cause and you will vote on, yes, we are proceeding with this or no or not at the May meeting, is my interpretation of where we are right now.
And that's what we're showing.
That's for.
For two project.
At the rate that you pursue it and as we get other funding potentially through the state.
And another most recent thing we applied for didn't have any construction money in it. It was just engineering planning.
Basically, what the grant you guys approved Tuesday night was, is it's for planning. So you don't identify projects. It's all projects. It's heavy precipitation, flooding events, um erosion. Then they come and they partner you with an agency. And then it says, what can you do to minimize risk in all of these areas? So it's stormwater inclusive, but not just on that. And then you would have to apply later for phase three, which is designed in pages, phases four, which is construction. But some of your preliminary stuff will be in their system for the plans that we submit. So you would get credit for some of the planning that you're doing.
Have you seen this plan from the core, preliminary?
No, I've only seen a draft version of the agreement that they did with the county. Cause they're, us and the county are the only ones in North Carolina so far that have been successful, to my knowledge of everything I've been told. So I have to sit down and go through, get them to send me what our draft agreement's gonna look like. And then we can present that to you at May. I do know what the description for the two project areas we submitted are. And I know that Tom expressed a concern to me that there was one of our alternatives in the stormwater plan that he didn't care for. But pretty much the project descriptions that are in there is what you are agreeing to. And there's been people that changed their project description along the way, so you need to know that ahead of time. The project descriptions that went in would be what we would be agreeing to, so you don't get down the road and then be like, I don't like this, so.
The three hundred block and its mullet, those two in there. And what I didn't like about the three hundred block was building a retention basin in two lots in between four residential homes. I'd rather they just plummet and send it out. I think it was first, one of the alternatives didn't have the the retention basin in it. And I'm worried about it because of mosquitoes. I'm, I just, it's a mess to have water sitting in a pool between residential houses. It's a safety risk too, so that's my opinion on it.
And Chris, so the early meeting with the, sorry, I'm not gonna call on you for a question. Early meetings with this last year, when we were pursuing the five-one-one-three program and we were making the stormwater plan. There were, Tim was in the room, Chris was in the room, I was in the room, there were a lot of people in the room. You weren't in the room with David.
I just about any knowledge of them.
But for the last meeting, it was only Chris, Chris, Ben, the engineer. Because what we were trying to do is get to what the intended payment we were spending each budget year was and what we had to present to the core, so they could align there. Cause our budget calendar differs from theirs and we need to make sure we were on the same page on what was available when. So that's about as far along as we are.
So is that the only option or were there other options that the core could choose in the, in the?
There, I think there were three options for each of those areas.
Yeah, so.
Three hundred block, that option and mullet.
Know what they're gonna, they're gonna come and tell us what we're gonna do?
Our engineer submitted what was our best option to this.
But I don't think the core's gonna come back and challenge what the engineer submitted. He's, we said, when it's submitted, it says, these are the things we want funded. And they said, we're gonna pay seventy-five percent of these two things, right? So I can't see, unless the agreement says we all have to donate organs or something, it seems to me that they're often pay seventy-five percent and unless the agreement's bad.
But.
Seems like we should do it. I just, I'm not understanding what the issue about.
And I do need you to understand, and I think I've said this before, but it is a reimbursement.
We pay. Okay, thank you. Now I understand what the one point nine million is. That was a very long explanation.
It was a good explanation.
Y'all kept asking me more questions.
Well, we don't know what we don't know and uh, yeah. So um that that's maybe a really good example, because in a project like that, you've got expenses in the SIP over X years to do things. And then you've got line items in the revenue for the SIP. Um, so if the project goes away, the revenue goes away, revenue goes, you know, it's just, I get hung up because we're gonna do all these projects and it's come from all these different ways, but it's hard to say, you know, this, if this project moves what it does to the general fund or the B part fund or, you know, it would it'd just be nice to have some better way of tying these together and say, this is a project we're gonna do and these are the expenses we're gonna have in these years. And those expenses are coming from the general fund or B part or debt or grant or whatever. So that you can tick and tie the, you know, this, this expense ties to these revenues. And it's just me, but it's like, the numbers match, but I really don't know how these impact, the revenue line gets impacted by the expense line and and vice versa. Like what we've got now, what we just discussed, which is if that, if that expense line goes away, the revenue line's gonna go with it.
There is no revenue line for it right now.
Well, no, but the one we put in is tied to this.
That's what I heard.
Very much tied to this. So, you know, I mean, I I guess you can assume that the water and sewer is coming out of the water and sewer fund. And the B part projects are coming out of the B part fund and then. and the B part projects are coming out of the B part fund, and then general pro, but in terms of other than the, the bucket, I don't, I, I don't know, I, I just have a hard time understanding the implications of these plans on the funds.
Any questions?
I'll have one more question. The, the fire hydrants, I, I noticed that on water and sewer, um, that's an estimate on how many, we're gonna have to.
Manic covered, tells about two hydrants per year. I, I just don't necessarily get there and put those two in, but that's about what our fare rate then.
Okay, so right now, all our hydrants are working?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're assuming one's gonna, or two will fail, and, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We still do some repairs on some of the others, but about two years, what I've actually had to replace, repair the total hydrant.
Okay, but if four fail, we're gonna have the money, we're gonna fix, we're not gonna leave them.
We're gonna back on you, I'd be in the north.
Yeah, okay, that, that's. I, I, yeah, that puts the ton of risk. Okay, um, I have done all mine, I think. There's no motion to adjourn here?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry?
Sure.
Sure, off the record.